Welcome, everybody. This is Dick and Sharon of LA Progressive, and we have our longtime friend Mario Solis Marti. She was very knowledgeable on issues of politics and a whole lot of other issues as well. And Mario was just asking me, did I see the news today? Go ahead, Mario.
Yeah, just a few minutes ago, just a few minutes before this recording, Nury Martinez, who is the councilwoman that's been under fire, formerly the president of the Los Angeles City Council, has put out a statement resigning from the city council for she resigned from her seat, right? As president, people were wondering what was taking her so long to resign from her council seat? Well, she's finally done it just a few moments ago. And I've read through the statement, and I'm sure by now people could find it all over the place, but you could post it, I guess, on laprogressive.com. It's very telling. I mean, I'm reading through the statement. There is no apology in the statement. The first sentence is, "It is with a broken heart that I resign my seat for Council District 6, the community I grew up in and my home." And then she goes through about four, five paragraphs of talking about her accomplishments as a city councilperson. There's, you know, I keep on looking for the Easter egg of the apology and all of that. It doesn't exist. And by reading this, one would think that she did all of this work by her own. There's no acknowledgement of her staff, which is usual and, you know, this is a very unusual situation. But when, you know, when elected officials resign or move on, or, you know, they usually apologize to their staff, they apologize to the community, they acknowledge their staff for the things that they've done. Nothing like that in here. This is basically a resignation that's wrapped within a humble brag. And I guess if you're a city council member, it means you never have to say you're sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it sounds like it. Well, I haven't had an opportunity to read it yet because, like you said, it was just issued. So we haven't seen it, but certainly we will be publishing it on the LA Progressive. So what do you make of all of this, Mario?
Well, this is, there's so much here, right? So it's almost like I don't know where to start. But quite frankly, this is probably the biggest political explosion within Los Angeles that I've seen in all the many years that I've worked in politics and have been commenting on public policy issues. It's also the biggest explosion that I've ever seen in the Latino community and in the progressive multi-ethnic coalition that we've created here in California. So this is a very big deal. And it's not surprising that the city council decided, almost like faster than anybody thought they would, not only to call for the resignations, but also to order the city attorney to take a look at doing charter reform to do a number of things, and the grandest of which is expanding the city council. You know, we have, right now, almost, what, 800,000 constituents for every member of the city council? In, for instance, Chicago, it's, they have 52 seats, and it's about 50,000 or so, 52,000 or so, excuse me, 80,000 constituents per council member. So we are way out of whack, right? And I think that it's more than a first good step. I mean, but it's obviously more has to be done. But fundamentally, a change like this, should we be able to accomplish it? Should the people of Los Angeles be able to accomplish this? Would be major because it actually defangs the power of the city council in many respects. There are a lot of other tweaks that, you know, I'll be shouting about over the next, you know, few months and years, year, hopefully it doesn't take longer than that, you know, to do this. Not the least of which is the practice of every council member, you know, having to approve everything that goes on in their district, right? That's insanity. And it gives, once again, it just leads to situations where people, where members of the council, you know, believe that, you know, that it's their fiefdom. And it has a, it's not only potentially corrupting, as we've seen with a number of council members, but it's also just psychologically corrupting for the person who, you know, walks into that seat.
Now, one thing that troubled me was how comfortable they were with the talking that they were doing. This wasn't a case where somebody accidentally left a mic on and said something nasty to a colleague. They were obviously very comfortable. They had this homophobic, racist, anti-Semitic conversation over the course of an hour, which to me says that when they got together, this is how they talked. I mean, this is, this is who they are. Some of the four were less forthcoming, but nobody got on a chair and said, "Oh, no, 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 we shouldn't be talking this way." And the thing I wondered, I mean, these are four people from the community, and is the way they were talking and the way they were thinking, does that represent a big slice of the community?
I mean, well, what we've seen at the same time is we've seen this backlash from the community saying, "We're not going to tolerate this. This is not, this is not, you're not who we thought we elected," right? And that has been, when you looked at the testimony at the Los Angeles City Council, really, for, you know, for a number of people, you know, not everybody, but, you know, I'd say the vast majority of people there, you could see the disappointment, not only the anger, but the disappointment, like, who are you, right? Why are you behaving this way? So I do think that at the neighborhood level, right, that despite our differences, we have found a way to get along, you know, and to work together. You know, I used to live in Los Angeles, and I no longer live in Los Angeles, but it's the same throughout many communities. I live in Long Beach right now, throughout many communities, you know, in California that are diverse, where we find a way to get along and we find a way to celebrate each other. It's almost watching that, and I would encourage anybody that's into politics, anybody that loves the city of Los Angeles, any political science student to watch, and by the way, and any elected official especially, to watch that tape, to watch that hearing. The divide between the people who elect the representatives and the representatives was so stark. And even the well-meaning ones, or let's say the one, and some of the ones who are not so well-meaning that just haven't been caught yet, let's be frank about that. You know, but the, you know, who they are, what their experience is, it was magnified as you watched that, you know, that city council meeting. And I think it's extremely instructive, and I think it points to the fact that we, that Los Angeles does need charter reform. You know, we went through charter reform in Los Angeles while I lived there, and people were complaining in that time that we were just kind of tweaking at the edges, right? And this charter reform needs to be not just driven by the city attorney, but also by the people of Los Angeles. There needs to be input by the people, by the voters in Los Angeles, so they could see what they're buying into, because that's what needs to happen. There needs to be a reinvestment in civic activity. People, everybody complains about how certain segments of the community don't vote. It's, and it's very lazy, very lazy. Political consultants will tell you, although that group doesn't vote, Latinos don't vote, poor people don't vote, these people don't vote, right? They just don't show up. Well, you know, politics is the only business where we blame the consumer for not buying the product, right? In any other business, you go, "How can people not buy my Coca-Cola?" And you go out there and you, you know, you find a way to get people engaged in whatever product you're selling. And, you know, instead of just writing off people saying they habitually don't vote, especially when the statistics show very different patterns of behavior of civic engagement once people are engaged. So we have, we do, the, there were so many telling things, clues. I mean, the low turnout that the city of Los Angeles has been having, and it's like, oh, people don't care. Well, maybe, maybe people do care. And maybe people are saying, "You don't care, and I'm not going to show up for you," right? That's also an option in that discourse. But that's, that's an option that people, you know, that the consultant pundit class, you know, don't explore. It's like, you know, the blame has constantly gone back on voters. We are seeing, we are seeing voters emerge. I think that the very telling thing that's happened this year, which I'm very excited about, has been the emergence of younger candidates of color that have really, you know, jumped into the scene. And, you know, we have Eunice Adnan this, right? Austin Gil Sadio, obviously those voters made a great choice, you know, in hindsight. Good choice, right?
She'll be our new council member.
And then there's, you know, but then there's Hugo, right? You know, who just, you know, like, it basically comes in first in a race with an incumbent and is really poised, you know, to win that seat. And then you have Mejia, citywide, a young progressive of color, right? Also, right, you know, kind of the same thing. So the question is that I would ask the LA Times and, you know, and everybody else, "How was this missed?" I mean, because each one of those candidates was supposed to lose. Each one of those candidates by the metrics were from organizations that never won. I got into a debate with a couple of consultants last year about Hugo's race in CD 13, Council District 13, excuse me. And, you know, and I was told, "Oh, he's not a threat. He's not, you know, he really is not going to emerge." But here he is, right? And obviously, those movements are not built overnight. They didn't decide to run a year ago, and suddenly they won. They've clearly been working at this for a long time, and it hasn't, and nobody noticed, right?
That's right.
Nobody noticed, and here they are. And so there's like this trend for these younger progressives. And because it's, you know, because it's Los Angeles, they're younger progressives of color, right? And that we're seeing, this is, this is a generational trend. This is something that even if, even if one of them loses in November, which quite frankly I doubt, but even if one of them loses, it's still so obvious that something, the ground has shifted. And so if you add all this stuff together, we're, Los Angeles is at a historic moment. And I will tell people throughout the state, if this is happening there, it's happening where you are. I mean, this is, this is not, you know, these movements, these trend lines don't occur in a solitary fashion. And so for that reason, I'm hopeful. Even though as distressing as this whole incident has been, and it's been painful, you know, I was, you know, all the words, right, shocked, dismayed, appalled, right? I've said them all since Sunday. Hugely angry and disappointed at Kevin DeLeón, which, you know, which, that, you know, everybody rallied for when he ran for Senate, right? Not so much in the mayor's race, but definitely when he, when he ran for Senate. And I think he's the one that's the most out of touch with the reality of what he's done, quite frankly. He should have been the first to resign. And based on his principles, or his stated principles, based on his stated rhetoric, he should have been the first to resign, and it looks like he's going to be the last.
Yeah, he had the least to say that, to own up to in the talk. But what he didn't do is what I said before. He didn't stand up and walk out of the room. So he was co-signing it.
Well, not only that, but this kind of muddled analysis of The Wizard of Oz, right?
Twenty-five, twenty-five black people.
Twenty-five black people. I mean, you know, you know, I don't know what I was more shocked at, the fact that he couldn't get through the analogy, or that Nury had never seen the movie, right? I mean, both, by the way, both things are disqualifying. They should, I think that, that from now on, all progressive endorsement forums have to have the question, "Have you seen The Wizard of Oz? Can you please explain the analogy?" Right? Because it turns out that they were the ones behind the curtain. It turns out that they were the ones behind the curtain. And the curtain has been opened up, and, you know, and there we have them. So there, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, I had another question. The thing that Sharon and I have talked about, this tape is a year old. Somebody sat on it for a year until a month before the election and then revealed it. They didn't accidentally reveal it. They very purposely put it out and promoted it. And I wondered, well, who gains in this, and what's the motive in that?
Well, if somebody thought somebody was going to gain from it, they certainly are going to hide forever, because certainly nobody, nobody gained, right? It could have been some weird shot to support, I mean, the Reddit user that first posted it, you know, positioned themselves as a Caruso supporter. That could have been a disguise, right? That could have been a fake, you know, kind of a quarterback fake there. But I, so I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, you know, definitely nobody benefits from it. So it's very unclear what the intention was. You know, sometimes, sometimes politics could be about vengeance. It could be just, you know, just old-fashioned vengeance. And clearly, we don't know, you know, apparently there's going to be multiple investigations and, you know, et cetera, find out who did it. I'm heart, you know, when they find out, you know, someone's going to win their bet with their best friend about it. But I'm not, I really can't figure out. There's no angle where this actually benefits anybody. For people that want change in Los Angeles and want fundamental change against what they see as an out-of-touch power, you know, power elite. I mean, although that's Caruso's rhetoric, it certainly hasn't landed, and people have found that to be not believable. So, you know, this doesn't, I mean, this might highlight the problem, but, you know, Caruso, no one's buying that Caruso, a multimillionaire developer, is the solution to taking down the elite, right? And so it didn't do that. Certainly doesn't help Karen Baz, who now has to spend time sewing together a coalition. It's, you know, it certainly didn't help any of the people on the call, or excuse me, in the meeting. And so it's really hard to tell what somebody was up to. But, you know, you know, sometimes a cigar is just a cigar. And it could, you know, it definitely could have just been plain old-fashioned vengeance. Let's stir some stuff up, you know, I'm mad at councilperson X that was in this room, and I'm going to expose that person.
I think your earlier point about the rise of a young generation of people of colors, Aunice and Hugo. Aunice, we had in our house for a fundraiser. I think in this dismal political season, that's a real bright light, the fact that this new generation, Aunice has been, and Hugo too, have been on the, in the grassroots for a long time. It's not like they decided to leave some job. And they have a lot of promise. And I gather there could be up to eight empty seats or eight new council people because of this. And there could be a real seat change.
But, okay, so that leads me to the second part of that question. There is another part of this equation that isn't really being looked at, and that is the lack of media attention to this. Like you said, Mario, she wasn't Martinez. Her blunt speaking, this isn't new.
Right.
And the media was caught off guard with Aunice's victory over Gil Sadio in the primary, with what's happening with the young guy who's running for comptroller. No, Hugo and Mejia. The media is like, well, where are they? Where is the media? Why is it that, I mean, you've been a long time media activist, media representative. What has happened to progressive media in Los Angeles?
I mean, I think it's-
Not speaking of the LA Progressive, just-
But let me tell you, you know, your work at LA Progressive has been extremely unique. And you've both put, and your team has put a lot of work into it. You know how difficult it is to get this done. I think that there's, there's other, you know, avenues that, you know, that people, or other avenues and platforms that people are starting to explore as well. I think it's difficult to, you know, to monetize. It's difficult to fund and keep going, especially if you're going to do hard-hitting stories, right? Especially if you're going to go out there and tell the truth. It's very, very, as I'm preaching to people who know this, it's a big chore. I do think, though, that what we saw in this, you know, in the past 72 hours makes me hopeful. Hasn't been 72, you know, at this point, but it's made me very hopeful because it has been, right, the grassroots news sites, let's say, that have really kind of pumped this story up.
Right, and it started with social media.
Right.
It started with Reddit. You know, and a lot of the stories, you know, if you look at what happened with Trayvon Martin and so on, it's social media now that is leading. You know, mainstream media is picking up the allegiance from Twitter.
Right, and this is, and that's very, they, it's hard to then believe the context that the Times puts, you know, into these stories because, you know, they read it on Reddit, when you read it on Reddit, and then, right? And so it is difficult. We, once again, we really don't have, because behind this story, right, there's the, there's the other story that wasn't covered about the emergence of this movement. And, you know, that, you know, though, and really, it's not a full story unless you combine those two things. Because what could have happened if that groundwork hadn't occurred, right? This would be an even worse disaster. If that coalition building hadn't been worked on, knitted together, maintained, right? All the hard discussions and elbow grease that goes into building those coalitions, you know, we could have been in a major, you know, a larger disaster than the one we're in right now. Thankfully, you know, by everybody's telling, those coalitions are tense but holding together and being celebrated in many respects. And I think it's almost like a comeuppance. Like, there's a, there's a certain sense of defiance, right? That that coalition, the Black and Brown Coalition as it exists, the gay, lesbian, Black and Brown Jewish API Coalition, that is progressive politics in Los Angeles, right? That that somehow, that is going to hold together in defiance of the power structure. And that's, so there's like, you know, unfortunately, you know, there's a lot of good news here, right? To say that kind of won't encourage people to continue doing bad things for good news. We could have the good news without the bad news, trust me, right? But the good news here could have been covered for a long time. And, you know, and the good news has not been covered, that these coalitions have been built. It's obvious that they're strong enough, right? And I've done multicultural, multi-ethnic coalition building, and, you know, it's difficult. You know, it'd be a lie to say it was easy. There are different priorities, there are different points of view. And so, you know, that work has to continue, and it has to be respected. And it's great that your organization talks about it, you know, that laprogressive.com talks about it. But we have to hope that, you know, that the majors, right, find these stories interesting, because people do. I mean, when, you know, every time that you see a public interest story at the end of, you know, eyewitness news, right? You know that they know that people want to hear good news as well. And the coalition building that's gone on in Los Angeles has, and throughout most of the region, most of the Southern California region, is really inspiring. But, you know, I hope that Kevin DeLeón understands that it finally dawns on him someday soon, that, you know, that time has left him and that he stayed still while the city moved forward, and he needs to resign.
Yeah, yeah. I hate to say that, but I think I agree with you. So, yeah, I do agree with you.
Yeah.
And it's sad, because he showed promise.
It is, it is a difficult, kind of, you know, corrupting, but, you know, politics and power and, you know, influence could be, you know, very corrupting. And I think that, you know, that it, what we have had many discussions over the last few days with a number of Latino leaders encompassing around AIDS during the part of the AIDS movement. When I got into hardcore electoral politics, right? You know, I worked with Javier Becerra, you know, and then with, you know, with Ed Reyes, right? Nick Pacheco, which, you know, the, you know, and, you know, in that, that's, you know, all that area there, and a number of others, right? Mike Hernandez. So I've seen really good people emerge and really, and people get into those positions, and some do better than others at managing the distractions of power. I think, I think Ed Reyes, who a lot of people, you know, found very, almost technocratic, right? He was in, but he left a legacy, you know, to be proud of, the LA River, right? He was one of the first elected people with power to actually, you know, pursue that, the repair of the LA River. And he has a lot to be proud of, you know? Javier is now the secretary of health. There were a lot of good that came out, but there was also a lot of bad stories as well. And so then the idea is like, what, you know, how does this happen? And I think that one of the elements here is that, as Latinos, and I would suggest an observation to other people of color groups, but as Latinos, we tend to elevate our electeds into some kind of a star status. And I think that does them a disservice, and I think it does us a disservice. I think that we, you know, that our relationships need to be more honest and more casual. And I think that the pipeline from, and this would be my word of kind caution to Hugo and to Eunice, is that the pipeline from activism to electoral politics, you know, you know, we need to watch that to make sure that the organizations that give us and produce good leaders, right? Then, if those leaders decide to get elected, that they're replaced by strong leaders. And that the, so that that tension between what the community demands and what the, you know, what the elected official could offer remains. Because that tension is healthy, that tension is good. And that is really our only safeguard, right? And I think that we really, you know, need to begin to look at this a little bit more like a power struggle.
Yes, I, you know, Dick and I live in that, in that same community.
Right.
Javier Becerra was our congressional representative for many, many years. And we have tremendous amount of respect for him. And we were very engaged in Democratic Party politics at one time.
I remember that.
Members of the Northeast Democratic Club. But what you're speaking of, Northeast Democratic Club, they were treated, you know, as if they were royalty. But I tell you one person who always rejected that, and that was Javier Becerra. He just, he wouldn't have it. He would, you know, sit down with us and talk about what it was like being in Washington and how much he appreciated how we educated him on issues. So, and you can kind of sense who is really being impacted by the power and who is intentional about not changing and serving, really serving the people.
Yeah, we have kind of an interesting story about Javier. He was speaking to the Northeast Democratic Club. And afterwards, we had brought in a store manager from Smart and Final, who supplied this stuff, was absolutely non-political.
He told us he wasn't going to vote.
He was a young Latino man. Javier Becerra spent a half an hour on a hot August night educating that young man about politics.
About why it's important to vote.
I mean, it was like, my God, he had better things to do, you know? But, I mean, he took a long time, right? It was, it was, it was very charming.
I, when I met, when I met him was after he was elected. I had done a lot of- Um, I had done a lot of, uh, you know, I, 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 I had been really assisted quite a bit by Congressman Roy Ball in the AIDS work that I was doing. And so when the, you know, then they, you know, supported him, I was to, to take that seat. I was very, you know, I was kind of detached. By the time I got back, he was, he was elected, but I ended up working on, on the campaign side, uh, with him. And so, you know, and I worked with him for probably about six or seven months. And because of the way I was, you kind of brought into politics and the way my parents brought me up, quite frankly, which I think is cultural, I constantly called them congressmen. And we're on his way to the car right now and he was, and one day we left this event. We're headed to his car. He was going to drop me off, him and Henry Lasano were going to drop me off to my car. And he looks at me because I just have one question for you. It was like really irritated. And I thought, oh crap, you know, what happened? You know, something went wrong. Cause he could also be very, uh, you know, uh, very stern, right? Very detail oriented and very stern. And he goes, there's just one thing I need to ask you. And I said, you know, what is it? And he goes, why do you call me congressman all the time? He goes, I really, he goes, my name is Javier. He goes, why are you doing that? And we still have, by, by the way, we still have X elected officials who make you refer to them by their previous title.
Yeah.
Right? And, and it, I, I, we have to change, only we could change it.
That's right.
Right? Only we could change it. And I think, I think for, uh, some Latino cultures, uh, respect is like, you know, kind of, uh, really, you know, uh, infused in us at, at a very early age, you know, respect for anybody that's older, respect that any, anybody that has a title, respect, you know, which is in one way very good. But, but in another way, it, it could go too far. And I kind of see the trademarks of that here, you know, we have to break out of this idea of who's working for who. And not to be disrespectful or not to be mean, right? Or anything like that. But just to know that we're in, on common ground. And I think that, you know, just we, we need an attitude change about how we approach these people. One of the things that's going to help is fifty council districts, right? I mean, fifty, fifty, if you're constantly running into your elected official at the, you know, you know, at the local taco truck, right? Then, you know, it, it's a different level of feeling. It's a different level of interaction. Right now, how difficult is it for a person to get, to get a half hour meeting with their member of Congress? I mean, excuse me, the member of the city council.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
And, you know, I think the city council district is almost the same size in terms of the population as a, as a congressional district.
As districts and the people here are very accessible. As you know, I did a lot of work in Colorado and Denver. I mean, you couldn't get away from elected officials. If you try, you know, you're constantly, you know, uh, if you want to let your hair loose, you kind of didn't go to, you know, try not to hang out because you're going to run into them. Right? They'll put you to work. You know, it's a very, very, very different, right? Uh, relationship with, you know, with, uh, the elected bodies when the districts are smaller, when they, and, and when they, uh, are more, you know, commonly accessible. And the, the council is too big. I, I think that people, we all live in a city together. Uh, you know, wherever city we live in, for the people of Los Angeles, your council member needs to be able to take input from other council members when things, when priorities are being set for your district. This idea that only they could make the decisions for the district and everybody votes automatically to support them. It, you know, to support whatever that is. It's a, it's, it's a ridiculous idea. It doesn't work in complex societies and Los Angeles is a complex society.
Wow. Well, uh, on those words of wisdom, I think it's time for us to end this conversation.
Good to talk to you too. This is, this has just been awesome.
Yes, thank you. We've got to do this more often.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're going to close this session with Mario Solis Marich, a wise man, a political consultant, lots and lots of history and knowledge. And I hope that, um, this, uh, chartering or rechartering the city of Los Angeles, I hope that, um, this picks up some steam.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad you ended it on an upbeat note. I think that was important in, in kind of these sort of dismal times.
Thanks so much again. This is Sharon. Take care, Mario. Thanks for being with us.
Bye-bye.